I'm going to turn it over to the clerk, who's going to read the virtual meeting notice and call roll. So, Madam Clerk?
Yes. The meeting for which this agenda was posted is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2. And state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. Public hearings are being held electronically at this location, and viewers can also view the video on FCC TV, Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. Public comments will be accepted electronically at cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. They were accepted today via voicemail as well at 703-248-5014. And they will be accepted this evening again at cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov until 9:00 PM or until the last public hearing is closed. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public again can view it here on our livestream or on FCC TV, Cox 11, RCN 2, or Verizon 35.
All right. Thank you very much. Will you call roll now, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Here.
For Duncan.
Here. There he is.
There he is. Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Carter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, welcome to all who are viewing electronically. I'm going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and wherever you might be, I would ask that you please rise and read the Pledge of Allegiance with me. So, let's go ahead and get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. And now, let's go on to our receipt of public comments. And I know, Madam Clerk, you've received a fair amount of written comments. I wonder if you might be able to read those for us now.
Yes. And would you like me to save the CIP public hearing comment for that item?
Sure. That would be fine.
Okay. So, our other public comments. Henri Bartholomew thanked Council for their thoughtful response to George Floyd's killing. He asked that the city focus on excising racism and unfair treatment of all persons, de-escalation of every encounter between law enforcers and the community, and dialogue rather than confrontation. Clifton Taylor asked the Council to take President Obama's mayor's pledge and commit to reviewing city policing policy. Sean Dakin of 124 Whittier Circle asked that the city take President Obama's pledge today to review police use of force policies with members of the community and commit to report on planned reforms. He also requested that the city consider Campaign Zero's list of eight actions police can take to ensure more deaths do not happen. He also requested that the city examine creating a police civilian review board like the one that Marcus Simon helped implement in Fairfax County. He expressed his respect for Police Chief Mary Gavin, praised his positive interactions with city police, and thanked the chief for her advocacy on gun safety and gun violence prevention. Megan Mitchell of 310 Bishop's Court said she was grateful for the statements of Mayor Carter, the City Council, City Manager Shields, and Police Chief Gavin condemning the death of George Floyd and calling for change to secure racial justice and peace. She said that after decades of widespread police misconduct and abuse and erosion of public trust, words were not enough. She said the past several days have shown that throughout this country there is a widespread consensus for police reform, and she asked that the city publicly disclose the police department's use of force rules and pledge to adopt these reforms recommended by the Acan Wait campaign, which are: One, ban chokeholds and strangleholds; Two, require de-escalation; Three, require warning before shooting; Four, exhaust all other means before shooting; Five, require officers to intervene and stop excessive force by other officers; Six, ban shooting at moving vehicles; Seven, require use of force continuum to limit the types of force and/or weapons that can be used to respond to specific types of resistance; and Eight, require comprehensive reporting on the use of force and threats of use of force. Cindy Cunningham wrote to say she didn't know what policies the city had in place to ensure what happened to George Floyd never happens in Falls Church. She said that President Obama spoke about a set of recommended police policies set out by the Acan Can't Wait campaign that are proven by data to decrease police violence by 72%. She asked which of the policies are in place for the FCC PD and urged the City Council to reform these policies if any are not. Kamal Basaz Smith urged the mayor to take President Obama's pledge in order to build and nurture a society that does not murder our Black brothers and sisters for existing, that rewards love and not hate, that works together towards a more just society, and that works to treat people equally. He said that Falls Church could help to lead the country on the issue. Seema Mahini and her family called for the city to revisit policing policies to ensure that horrific tragedies like the death of George Floyd do not occur in Falls Church, and the Council to ensure that -- asked the Council to ensure that policing practices ensure the safety of all lives. Laura Lindsay of 331 Grove Avenue asked the City Council to publicly examine the city's policing practices. She said, "As a politically progressive city that was literally built on systemic racism, Falls Church has a moral obligation to ensure that civic organizations move towards anti-racism." She asked for information about the police department, including any union agreement, anti-racist training or warrior training practices, body camera policies, how trust is built with marginalized communities, and if racial data on police interactions is collected. She also asked for an open discussion about racial inequities in Falls Church, including obstacles to Black-owned businesses, a commitment to increase affordable housing, and a public discussion of how the city is doing in its commitment to anti-racism and social justice. She suggested asking middle and high school students for their assessment of racism in schools. She asked that anti-racism become a central value in the city. Jennifer Smith said the city has a lot of work to do in undoing 400 years of inequity on matters related to education, housing, health care, and economic opportunity, and that issues are -- those issues are important to her and her family. Louise and Colin Storm urged the Council to review the eight points outlined in the research of the police use of force project and consider signing the pledge. They said that Falls Church has often been a leader in inclusive, pro-community stances, and being among the first cities to take this pledge not only sends a strong signal to other communities in the D.C. metro area, but also to communities across the nation that are similar in population and size. David Ossler of 331 Grove Avenue asks if the city has an independent police board that reviews the police and acts of force, if the police are allowed to use chokeholds, and how city police avoid racial targeting or other policing actions that target people of color. Allison Brown and Gardner Humphries of 706 Publer Drive urged Council to recommit to a diverse, inclusive Falls Church by supporting President Obama's mayor's pledge, increasing support for affordable housing, and supporting the registrar. They said they were willing to pay higher taxes to fund affordable housing programs, amend zoning laws to promote multifamily dwellings, allow accessory dwelling units, ensure the key project stays affordable for its residents, and insist on 10% of units in new buildings being affordable units. They asked the city to fund return postage for mail-in ballots and have a drop box for voters to return ballots. Tony D. Lewis of 500 Roosevelt Boulevard said that the recent murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery have sparked nationwide outrage, shining a spotlight yet again on racism in America. These events ought to prompt police departments and local government officials to reflect upon their role in upending systemic racism. She said, "Part of this role involves reimagining the future of policing, and that reforms like better sensitivity training for officers, community oversight for police departments, or the use of body-worn cameras to monitor police activity don't do enough to prevent police violence or overpolicing of low-income neighborhoods and communities of color, and they do not address root causes of crime." They explained that this is why many people of color and community activists propose that instead of continuing to increase police budgets, to adopt reforms that don't work, that police departments are defunded in order to trim police roles down to specialized tasks and to prioritize investment in economic empowerment, education, health programs, mental health programs, and social services. They also said that part of the reason reform doesn't work is that police officers in America are simply asked to do too much with too little specialized training. They asked that instead of trying to make police less violent and trying to turn them into community outreach workers, that we employ actual community outreach workers who can address root causes of societal issues while maintaining police as a small specialized class of public servants whose job it is to respond to violent crimes. They urged the City Council to protect and empower people of color like them by defunding the police department and reallocating taxpayer funds to invest in community resources. And they urged Council to educate themselves about a police-free future and provided several resources for that. Robert Quinteros of 705 Fulton Avenue thanked Mayor Carter for his comments at this weekend's rally in Cherry Hill Park and stated that it is important to acknowledge the city's past racist and discriminatory policies. He said that going forward, he expected to hear more specifics about what Falls Church will do to undo the culture of racism. He said that Mayor Carter mentioned an upcoming review of law enforcement policy and practice, but as the Council noted in its statement on the murder of George Floyd, "Action needs to go beyond law enforcement and permeate all aspects of life in Falls Church, including education, housing, and land use, and economic development." He said that by not dealing directly with race and inequality, these policies have a profound role to play in reinforcing and exacerbating inequalities through their neutrality. He said it is not sufficient to be not racist, and noted that the opposite of racist isn't not racist. It is anti-racist. Andrea Calmont of 423 Cheryl Avenue said that George Floyd's murder at the hands of police in Minneapolis is the manifestation of an unacceptable reality in the U.S., that of enduring police brutality against Black Americans. She said that she supports President Obama's call for local elected officials to review their use of force policies with members of their community and to report on planned reforms. She said that she would like to see Falls Church explore the establishment of a civilian review board for police practices, and that she supports the recommendations made by Campaign Zero to end police brutality in the United States. She said that Police Chief Mary Gavin is a wonderful leader and noted that her comments are in no way meant to denigrate the hard work the chief has done to help make the community safer. And I think I actually have an additional one from Bethany Henderson that came in earlier this morning. And Bethany lives at 1002 Madison Lane. She said she encourages the councils to take up President Obama's challenge to publicly review our city's use of force policies and actively solicit feedback from a diverse range of community members about their experience with the local police force. While she has personally had nothing but positive experience with members of the police force, she thinks that it is deeply important that she and we as a community do not merely assume that our personal experiences are the norm. And she said she hopes that the results of such an investigation will demonstrate that all who live in, work in, or pass through the little city are now and will continue to be consistently treated by our police with the respect and fairness all humans deserve. And those are our written comments.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And could you repeat that email address once again for people who still might want to comment as the evening progresses?
Yes. It's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. And VA is like Virginia. Cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov.
All right. And so, for those of you watching right now, if you haven't made any comments and you wish to do so, you can still make comments as this evening progresses, and the clerk, at the appropriate time, will mention those comments or read those comments to Council and the public. So, you are all welcome to continue to comment through the penancy of tonight's meeting. So, why don't we move on now to Council requests? Are there any Council requests at this time? All right. Let's move on to the report of the City Manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. Members of Council.
I'm sorry. I did have two more just regular public comments that came in since we started. Did you want to do those now?
Sure.
Before we get to the City Manager? Sorry. Terry Harrison noted that some of the lights have stopped working on Broad Street between Maple and Little Falls, I think the tree lights, and she said, "We need those lights to keep us hopeful and cheery." And Josh Shakur sent a message as well, which I will read regarding community policing and engagement. Josh Shakur? I don't have his address. He said, "As a policy response to recent events throughout the nation, the city of Falls Church should institute practices of introducing citizens to law enforcement, either individually or as a community at in-person or virtual events." He said he is a lifelong city resident and can only name one law enforcement officer in the city, and that is because they went to school together. If a poll was conducted to determine how many officers each household knew, he predicts it would be a small number, or zero. He said, "This is intended to remove stereotyping, implicit biases, and profiling by law enforcement while increasing community trust. A simple introduction: Hello, my name is Josh, or is nice to meet you. My name is Officer James. Breaks down walls and removes assumptions, and the next time either of them see each other, they will wave rather than be suspicious." He would also like to add that law enforcement in Falls Church should walk around the city more than remaining in their vehicles or on bicycles at all times. He said this again allows for interactions with citizens, and police are less perceived as policing this city and more as protecting and serving the residents. And he thanks you for listening to him and hopes you will consider these simple policy responses.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. Members of Council. I thought tonight I would have the manager's report deal entirely with the events over the past three weeks, and I'd like to speak to that. I would just note at the outset that we are joined with our Chief of Police, Mary Gavin, in this meeting, and also our Human Resources Director, Steve Mason, who has joined the city just in the past year and is really just an amazing and powerful addition to -- a very strong addition to our workforce. He comes to us with a career in law enforcement and human resources, and I wanted to bring him into this discussion, into this report as well. Just a couple of things I would like to note in my report. With the protests and the marches over the past two weeks since the death of George Floyd at the hands of Minneapolis police, the city has received much communication from its residents. And the clerk read those and touched on many of those communications. We are reading them all. Some common themes in these letters is to exhort the city to use its powers to promote racial equity and fairness in all areas of government activities, including access to economic opportunity, access to education, access to decent and affordable housing, and equal and fair administration of justice. I want to share with the Council that today we had an all-hands meeting with our city staff, and we've been doing these on a regular basis over the COVID emergency. But the discussion today was really a chance to begin our staff discussion on what we are hearing in the past two weeks, and what we're hearing nationally in terms of what we see on TV and social media, and what we're hearing in the comments that were read just earlier right here at home from our own residents. This is a time when I think government should listen and seek to understand. I think this is a time for that listening and that understanding to then turn into strong government actions that will promote fairness and equity and improvement in our society. And I want to state my personal commitment to work with community and work with the Council and work with staff to make major progress in this area. Throughout my life, I've seen so many examples where we have changed together to address problems, even seemingly overwhelming problems that seem intractable. With committed and sustained effort, we can change for the better, and it gives me what I would call a realistic optimism that we can address systemic racism in our society. It's a broad statement, but it's also a broad invitation for a bigger discussion about how our government can help us progress here locally. Two specific requests in the comments relate to our city police department and the rules and policies of our department with respect to the use of force. The city's police department, along with police departments everywhere, operates under a set of general orders, and that's where our policies relating to everything from administration to personnel matters are written down. And one of the most important sets of those regulations are the regulations with respect to the use of force in our work. One of the questions is in the mayor's pledge by the Obama.org process is to have an open and transparent review of those rules. The Acan Can't Wait list, which the clerk read earlier, goes to specific areas of the use of force and specific rules that are urged upon the city to adopt. And these are discussions that I think are appropriate for citizens, for residents, to know about, to understand, and to discuss publicly. I think in our history, these rules have never been intentionally kept private. They're public documents, but they are administrative procedures. Every year, we review them. There's sort of a constant evolution of reviewing these rules, but the signatories on those rules are the Chief of Police and myself, the City Manager. And I think the call in these requests is to open that discussion up, and that's something that many departments have done across the country, and it's something that I think we should do here in the city. The call has been made. I think we should respond to that call, and we could come back to the Council with a process, proposed process for doing that. This is a much bigger discussion, but I did want to just speak to that specific request. I'd also like to invite Chief Gavin, because there have been so many questions that have been raised by our residents, that perhaps she could just share briefly as a beginning of a discussion that will continue on some of her thoughts on these requests and our department's approach on these issues. Chief Gavin?
Thank you, Wyatt. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to listen to all the comments. I want to assure you all in the community, I've printed out each one. I see some common names in there that I've already had set up meetings with this week and next week. So, I wanted to just assure the community that I have each and every one of the comments that have been sent in tonight and those that have been sent to me individually and/or through the police email. I also wanted to make sure that the community and Council knows that I firmly support the actions the City Council, led by the mayor, to commit the city as a whole to look at our use of force policies as proposed by President Obama. Also, to reflect and to examine the Acan Can't Wait policy campaign, many of which we have adopted through our policies, but certainly we have opportunity to change and are even be better at some of the suggestions through that campaign. There are a couple themes throughout tonight's suggested, I guess, comments and questions that I could get to people personally, but, you know, the review board is one which I am anxious to do, not anxious, but I'm just excited to do some research about, because we haven't had that here in many years. And like I said, I've met with several, not only individuals this week, but I also have reached out to some of our religious leaders, sat down and listened, and seeking to understand the position particularly of our minority community. And they've been most welcoming and actually have invited me to some marches, which I will participate in tomorrow and in the near future. The one thing that strikes me in this community, too, is the young people. I will tell you, well before this past month, or this past couple of weeks before George Floyd was murdered, I had a four -- four years ago, I had a youngster, probably about seven years old, that held me accountable to Walter Scott's homicide. And she wrote me a letter, and I responded, and she said, "What are you doing, chief, to ensure that this does not happen in Falls Church?" And this was like a seven-year-old, which is most impressive. When I first got the letter, I wasn't certain if it was a youngster or it was somebody that was elderly, so I went to the house and was confronted by a seven-year-old. And we sat down and had this rough discussion as to what she's seeing on TV. And me and Rose, to this day, are pen pals, and she actually has written me a letter in the last couple of weeks. So, it is the youth that I'm most enthused about working with, because they do have great ideas and they are our future. So, we have a suggestion from George Mason High School's Assistant Principal that we meet as a forum with the youth, and we intend to do that, and they're going to get the ball rolling on that. So, I'm very thankful for that. The other things I just wanted to talk about in terms of moving forward, but also what we have done in recognizing our efforts in the past decade and a half. In the past several years, you know, we've met with a number of groups and have changed our policies based on their suggestions or concerns. And one was the ACLU. The ACLU came in and talked to us about the immigration issues, and they gave us some great ideas. You know, something when you sit in front of the ACLU and they're the restaurant owners, or actually, one of them was actually one of my employees, it's a real gut check as to make sure that you're doing all the right things, not by only the community, but your employees. And so, it was really kind of a -- it was an intimate meeting in the sense that I knew a lot of those people, and they got to know us. And they were complimentary, but at the same time, they were the ones that spurred us as a department to -- they didn't demand it, but take the name citizen and resident out of our policies to ensure equality, because those words do mean something, and they do put statuses on people. And particularly in police work, we cannot put statuses on people. The one other privilege I'd like to just highlight, which I thought was one of the highlights of my probably career, is a mom that was dropping her kid off at the community center had dropped by my office, and next thing you know, she's invited me to the White House, and I had the privilege to meet President Obama and be a part of the rollout of the 21st Century Policing Model Review. And I got to shake his hand and hold it for a while and thank him for that framework and talk to him a little bit about the city of Falls Church. And one interesting fact about that, what I'd like to highlight, is the co-author of that document, Charles Ramsey, and Lori Robinson, who is a current professor at George Mason University. Lori Robinson grew up on Hillwood Avenue, and when I've had the opportunities to meet her and think-takes in and around the region, maybe American University on building trust with communities and things, she holds a special place -- with communities and things, she holds a special place for Falls Church, and she always seeks me out to ensure that we're doing the right things. Not in a sense of trying to hold me accountable, but she has a special place, and she is one of the founding reform people for the Justice Department. So it's been a privilege to be able to roll in these circles mainly just because of the city of Falls Church. And I take it full circle, I came into this profession in 1986, and my mentor was our HR director today. And that, too, is a privilege, to be able to work in three decades, knowing that he was the gentleman that taught me use of force. He was the one that taught me how to treat people right, and we've been in connection for these three decades. You know, the Falls Church police work hard to ensure we're doing the right thing, but we have to work harder. We understand that. We're subject to all the ills and woes of any community, and so, you know, police culture is something you consistently and always have to have your finger on the pulse with. And it really is helpful to have, you know, the ear and voice of Wyatt with me and also, you know, honestly, Steve Mason, who has an extensive experience in police work, civil rights as a liaison, and he's also the defensive tactics instructor. So we're in a good place. We can be in a better place. I think making sure we commit to the city review is a positive step in the right direction. I'm already looking at the mission and seeing where we can make changes. I've always touted it as a mission that emphasized de-escalation, but I think we can tweak it and make it even better to ensure that we talk about equality in service. So that's my, that's my report, Wyatt. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. And Mayor, if we could, I would like Steve Mason just to share his perspective and then have questions and comments from the city council, if we could do that.
Sure, of course. Mr. Mason, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the city council. This is truly a privilege for me, because I do bring a very different perspective, although I've heard others' perspectives that are similar to mine, and first of all, being African-American, and then also serving as a police officer for 25 or so years, to include my military time. And this is a great opportunity for us, because it's an opportunity for us to listen. And as Mary said, in my role as a defensive tactics instructor, an officer-safety instructor, and also an instructor in the public for defensive tactics.
We lost him.
Mr. Mason, are you still there?
Steve, I think we might have lost you.
Yeah, it does look like he's disconnected.
It sounded like it was going to be good, so hopefully he will call back shortly. Maybe someone could give him a text and let him know that he's disconnected and see if he can rejoin our meeting, because I, for one, and I think all of us, be very interested in his perspective. So as soon as he rejoins us, we'll make sure he gets on this video call or video conference. In the meantime, before we turn to council comments and questions about what we just heard, is there anything more, Mr. Shields, you had to say, or Chief Gavin?
Mayor, I did just want to have the council hear those perspectives and, at that point, take any questions, comments, or direction from the council.
All right. Well, I tell you, maybe you could let Mr. Mason know he has dropped off the call, so he can join back on. But in the meantime, I want to thank you, Chief, for the fine work you've done and your dedicated police force and your commitment to excellence and to reevaluating constantly what we do here to make sure we are doing the best we can and are treating everyone with equality and fairness and the highest standards. And I know we're doing that now, but further reflection is always a good thing. I'm going to open it up to questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Cindy. I'm sorry to jump in. I'm showing that Mr. Mason may be back on, so can I check and see? Steve, can we hear you?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm back on. I'm not sure what happened. I think Wyatt did that.
We welcome you finishing your comments, so please, continue.
Well, I just wanted to say that it is an opportunity to be able to be a part of the discussion, because the idea is that we need to listen to all perspectives when it comes to the issues that are facing us at this time. The other thing is, and Mary alluded to it in regards to de-escalation, one of the things that's very easy for officers to do is to turn off, but the idea of teaching officers how to turn off, how to learn how to listen to how individuals are responding to them is extremely important. I also know that law enforcement, particularly in the Northern Virginia area, is second to none, after having been a trainer at the police academy and also keeping up with what they are doing now. So this is just a great opportunity for me, and I welcome the opportunity to be involved in any discussions in regards to the subject. Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh. Well, thank you. Thank you for your service to the region and for here in Falls Church as well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open up to my colleagues on council for questions or comments about what we've just heard. Does anyone have anything they would like to either ask or say?
Chief, I do.
Yes, Ms. Hardy, please.
Great. Thank you. So Chief, first of all, I'm going to preface all this by saying that I am so grateful and have the utmost respect for you and your strong leadership and your team. I think you've set the right tone and culture and expectations, and I think it's evident based on your comments tonight and the professionalism that I've experienced with our police force. I really appreciate hearing kind of how we've continuously improved and adopted a lot of those policies already, but I think, to your point, it's important that we are listening. I think it's important that we hear from citizens themselves and have that assessment so we have transparency to support what we believe is happening already. And I also think that a lot of the reform practices we're hearing from people are really going to be preventative, so that we don't have an issue in the future. And that culture that we're so proud of having built, I think, policies are what ensures that culture endures long beyond any of us are around. I have a couple of things that I wanted to add to that list beyond the ones that I've heard on the "Eight Can't Wait," so I wanted to see whether we could add that as we think about how to have a community discussion. I've been asked about whether we participate in the military's 1033 program, which I think is military kind of offering up weapons or other supplies to local governments and police forces. And I think there's a search that you can look online, and from what I could see, we've accepted about $800 worth of, I don't know what it was, but it just meant that we were participating, so I think that's probably something that we've been asked or will get asked more about.
Sure.
The second item is civil forfeiture. What's our policy around that and whether that's something that we should continue doing or not, especially as it might create kind of perverse motivations in confiscating more than we should? The third is, I think several have received a question today about what our funding percentage is for public safety and be able to benchmark that against what we see around the nation. And you already mentioned the civilian review board, and then I think in Dallas, they had recently passed a policy around a duty to intervene, so if you see kind of fellow police officers acting out of line, requiring other officers to step in to intervene. So there's probably many more out there. I think I'm very new to learning all of this, but I want to throw that out there as other things that I think are emerging in the reform area that I want to make sure we have some public discussion on.
I've got them.
Perfect. And so I appreciate that everyone's been supportive of wanting Falls Church to join President Obama's pledge, and so I hope that tonight we can be one of the first cities in Virginia to sign that pledge and look at our use of force policies. And I ask that we actually consider both the police and sheriff's department joining in that, so we actually talk about the policies in both places. Hearing what I'm hearing tonight, I hope that we really can be a model for the nation. And Chief, I also ask that, given that we have great collaboration across the region, given that our citizens likely interact with other departments as well and not just our own, hopefully the region joins in, and this is something that we can all do together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments from other folks?
Yeah, just, I got a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Of course, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Chief Gavin, one of the other questions that's come through, and I think that this is, in my opinion, a kind of a striking contrast between maybe what folks have seen on TV and certainly what we've seen here around Falls Church, but could you speak to, there was a question about the surplus sale of military hardware to law enforcement officials. I, for one, have never seen you guys heavily kitted up out there on the streets, but could you speak to Falls Church's kind of stance and how that works with local law enforcement, the purchase of surplus military hardware, some of the things that folks have seen, I think, more prominently during riots?
Right. We've never purchased anything. We have been given parts to weapons, but never purchased of any type of weapons. You know, there are, there are departments out there that have, you know, particularly Humvees or Bearcats and, you know, large military-style-type vehicles have been allocated, but we've never pursued that. We've never had the need to pursue that. But the $800, I have to go and do a little research on that, and I believe it was years ago, I think we did get surplus parts to weapons that were for the tactical team.
Okay. That's good to know. I appreciate the comments from both you and Steve tonight, and look forward to hearing more about some of the things that we can do to self-review civilian review panels as well as signing the Obama pledge. I think you guys have done a great job, and I think, as Councilwoman Hardy had pointed out, I would love for us to continue to be representative of good law enforcement that works well with the citizens and for the citizens and serving all of us, I think, in what I think is just a very, very professional manner. So thank you all for the way that you operate here and for us.
You're welcome. The only other thing I would add is, I'm just coming to mind that I think there were ceremonial weapons for the honor guard that are not functional, but those were, I think, military.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Gavin.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So let me address a couple of things. When at times comes time to making a motion or seconding, and I would certainly support us signing up to the mayor's pledge recommended by President Obama, and I think a lot of great work was done on policing in the 21st century that our police chief was involved in, and that's just an example of the fact that we've been working on constantly improving our police department over many years. This is not something that we just started two weeks ago or three weeks ago. We've been working at it, and the recent events show that we need to keep working on it. I think you've heard a pledge from our staff, first-rate staff, who bring incredible law enforcement resources to bear on this. So let me say that, first of all. Second of all, I think we all approach these issues somewhat from an autobiographical level. I can tell you that for more than 45 years, I've been a first responder, I've been on scenes, I've seen a lot of violence as an emergency medical technician. I've often relied on police to provide me security and the security for the people that I'm treating. So I'm a strong believer in a good, effective, well-funded, and progressive and sensitive police department, and I believe that's what we have tried to have in the past and will continue to update and improve as we go forward. The next point I want to make is that, whether we like it or not, there are people that seek to do harm, seek to do violence. We need the police department there. Otherwise, society deteriorates into vigilantism or worse. It's my view that the fundamental role of government is to keep the peace, and our police department, along with social services, fire and rescue services, are all key parts of keeping the peace. I also look forward to seeing what we can do, you know, in the social services area to address some of those issues, and note that, so some interesting work done by some of the fire services elsewhere on mental health calls. So I think that's all worthy of consideration. But I want to conclude with this. I think you've heard the chief give a very brief history. We are not new to this issue. We work hard at it. Our community has worked hard at it, and we're committed to working even as hard or harder in the future to address what has remained unaddressed. So I look forward to moving, seconding, voting for us endorsing the Obama pledge, because I think its contents are all fundamentally sound and contents which I think we ought to do. The "Eight Can't Wait," I think we heard the chief say she was looking at that. I'd like a little more time on that particular list. Clearly, some of them, like the chokeholds and other things, we have acted on and should. I just would like a little more input on that before we necessarily endorse the specifics of policing of that type. So I may make a few more comments later on, but I wanted to provide all of those. And really, in closing, I spent a lot of time with the protesters this Saturday in Washington, DC. The message was tough, it was direct, it was sometimes hard to hear, but it was worth hearing, and it was communicated in an incredibly civil way. And so I look forward to making progress, and I believe some of the actions we can take tonight and future will help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. Other speakers, other comments?
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, Mr. Duncan, of course.
Just two points I wanted to ask about. One, when we get to the stage of the process where we're evaluating the size of our police force compared to the population of our jurisdiction, I would like a better understanding of how our location in the middle of a very densely populated area relates to, you know, the appropriate size of our force. You know, it's usually an advantage that we are the hallway of Northern Virginia, because a lot of people drive through our city and can patronize our businesses, and we welcome that, but it also adds a degree of burden to law enforcement that perhaps jurisdictions that are our size, that are more isolated, don't have. And I would just like to make sure that we're comparing apples and apples when we evaluate the size of our police force. The second thing, I certainly agree with Mr. Mason's comment about this being an opportunity to promote understanding on all sides, and I would hope that, without revealing any, you know, privacy-sensitive details, we could get a look at the range, the breadth of the kind of responses that our police officers are working on on any given day. You know, I mean, most of us are familiar with the kind of things that we see, speeding and vehicle collisions and that sort of thing, but, you know, there's a long list of other acts that our enforcement folks respond to, whether it's drugs or animal control or especially mismanagement or domestic disturbances and noise issues, armed robberies, you know, assaults, mental health cases. There's just a lot more going on in the city of Falls Church than I think many people are aware of, because a lot of folks don't work in the city during the day or are away from here. And if it would be possible for us to share with the public just sort of an A to Z list of the kind of things that a typical law enforcement officer here is confronting, I think it would help us understand the investment in training that we need and the investment in recruiting really quality people, because it is true that we are asking our police officers to do a wide range of activities, and perhaps some of them should be handled by other folks, but at least first, let's understand, you know, that there is a lot going on in the city of Falls Church in the area of enforcement, and we should be appreciative of that as we undertake decisions about how to allocate resources. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Do others, any others want to speak?
It's Dan Z.
Hi, Dan.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to be brief, but I wish to associate myself with the council member, council member David Snyder's comment. Thanks so much.
All right. That's good. Anyone else would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would.
Yes, Vice Mayor Conley.
I'd like to reiterate comments that others have made thanking Chief Gavin and the police force for the community policing that police force for the community policing that they do. And just in the last week, I've seen our police out at about eight different events, a march and a rally. They were at Mount Daniel for the second and first in kindergarten drive-throughs, or I guess they were at the bowling alley for the drive-throughs. They were at Barb Cram's funeral. They were at the Tinner Hill banner unfurling today. And they're also planning on working on the senior graduation car parade. So, I want to thank Chief Gavin for having her officers in the community and for all that they do to support the community in that way. There was a comment earlier from Josh Shakur about helping people in the community get to know police officers. And I think that's a, I know they work at being in the schools and getting to know kids, but I think that would be another opportunity for our community to understand what the police do and the police to get to know the community. So, I would be happy to help with that or support that in any way that you can do that. The other thing is Chief Gavin mentioned that she's answering a lot of the questions that people have personally and meeting with people who are sending emails, which is amazing that you have time to do that. I think a lot of other people have those same questions, so it would be good if there was a way we could communicate those answers out to the whole community so that everyone can hear those answers as well. I would love to be able to have a sheet, so when someone sends me a message on City Council, I can say, "Sure, here it is, right on the website. These are all the FAQs and the answers to all these questions, and this is how we're handling this." And so, that would be a nice thing to add to the website as far as communications go. And then the other thing, Ms. Hardy mentioned the Sheriff's Department, and I would really like us to take a look at our Sheriff's Department. We've had Sheriff Biddle as the elected sheriff, and he's been out for a while. And Matt Kay has stepped in as the deputy, and he's been running the department. There are a lot of questions I have about the Sheriff's Department. They represent us in court, and we haven't had court in the city of Falls Church for the last two years because of the renovation of our courtroom in our city hall. And that will be coming back to the city of Falls Church. But most of our sheriff's deputies are volunteers, but they are indeed representing us in court for people who are there on pretty much the worst day of their lives. So, I want to make sure that our sheriff's deputies are included in that community policing model, and we take a look at what the policies and procedures are for the Sheriff's Department. What kind of racial sensitivity training are they getting? Who supervises them? And are they subject to the same policies and HR requirements that our police department and all of our city employees are? And then my last question is around data, because as I think about this, my background in education is that one of the things the schools have to do is test kids every year and then report on the data and say, "We're doing really well in 90% of everything, but this 10% really needs work," and then do a deep dive into, "What is that 10% that needs work?" And who are the kids that aren't doing well in school, and how can we reach those kids and help them succeed? And I think the same thing with data that I'm sure exists already. Who is getting arrested? Who's coming to court? Who is able not to come to court because they can afford to pay their fines or hire a lawyer, and who has to come to court? So, I think those are other things that we need to look at. And they may be included in all of the Obama Foundation, "It Can't Wait." But I think that as a city, we need a data metric dashboard to be able to say, "These are the, this is what we're doing, and here's how we're improving, and these are the plans." So, thank you for all that.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any comments?
With respect to the mayor's pledge that folks have spoken about, we can do a resolution. I'm not sure it's required, but it might be a good sign of our unity to go ahead and maybe do a pledge of our support. And I can go ahead and sign this, you know, as mayor. But that might be something to do. And I would just say that it's heartening to have our leadership speaking with one voice, and to have unity on these important issues, and to reaffirm our commitment to equality, fairness, and transparency. I know we're all very proud of our police department and our police leadership, but constantly reexamining how we do things, try to be the best we can be at all times, I think is a wonderful goal and a way to do business. So, I am delighted to sign this pledge. But if we'd like to go ahead and maybe do, would someone like to make a motion regarding this?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Make a motion for the mayor to sign that pledge on council's behalf, our community's behalf.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, while we're waiting to maybe take this vote, have any comments come in during the penancy of this discussion?
Yes, I do have another one. I missed the second on that, though.
That was, who was the second just now?
Letty and I both did it. I would defer to Letty if she wants to do it, or we could have multiple seconds, so.
We could have a second and a third.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to let the clerk decide who's the second on that.
Okay.
And would you like to read that comment that she wanted to see?
Yes, yes. Tony Lewis from Roosevelt Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard. We had a comment before. They asked, "Will the council and police department consider holding a series of community discussions about the future of policing in Falls Church as part of their response to reevaluating current policies and involving the public in the decision-making process?"
All right. Well, thank you. I'll tell you, maybe what we can ask, why don't we get through this vote, and we'll have a couple, maybe, closing comments. But why don't we finish the vote right now, and we'll revisit that in just a moment? Do you want to call? Yes.
Just a quick comment, because to address Mary Beth's concern, the pledge involves four steps. So, first, it's reviewing the use of force policies. Second, it's involving the community in a public dialogue. Third, to her point about transparency, we should report the findings publicly, listen to the feedback, and then the fourth is to take on reform. So, I think the pledge does take on those considerations.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Remember, if you're not speaking.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Shields and Ms., or Police Chief Gavin and Mr. Mason, thank you for participating in today's calls and today's conference call and meeting.
Mayor, we're not hearing you. Are you still muted?
No, I'm not muted.
I'm hearing him, Cindy.
Yeah, we can hear him.
Okay. I was just going to say, first off, thank you to you all for the work that you're doing right now. But I wonder if you all can get back to us, maybe through Mr. Shields, on ways that we can actually, you know, take steps going forward. So, in other words, give consideration to what you've heard tonight, and report back to us on concrete ways that you would propose implementing them, concrete actions that we could take in the coming weeks.
Certainly. We will do.
Yeah, Mayor, we will do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you all for this important conversation. Let's move on to this.
Sir?
Yes?
I have another public comment on this item. Phil Acosta of 101 Poplar Drive asked if the chief agrees that body cameras are standard, and what has to happen for our police officers to be equipped with those.
So, I don't want to put Chief Gavin on the spot. She's welcome to respond as she'd like, or you can do it offline, or if you have some general comments. I'll leave that to you, Ms. Gavin.
We're in a, we're in a process of revamping our in-car camera system, because it was at end-of-life. With revamping that system, we opted into the ability to get a body-worn camera with each camera. So, instead of a cost of $1,500 each body-worn camera, they cost $500, along with an in-car camera. So, we can't afford them all at once. We're not going to put them out until such time. We have a solid policy, and a good number of them out there. So, I have three new cameras in the vehicles, and three body cameras that will come along with that. So, we need to do some research on actually the cost of retaining the data, which is a big cost, because the cameras aren't the expense. It's actually the data retention that comes from both the in-car camera system and the body-worn camera system. So, we're in, we're in a transition period, and we're working towards that end. We recognize, too, that this very well may be a mandated requirement moving forward. We're just not certain yet. So, what we're doing is incrementally getting some of the resources so we're ready when and if it's mandated. But if not, we can move forward when we're ready with good policy. And we also have the back IT infrastructure to host all the information that a body-worn camera system needs.
All right. Well, thank you. And I'd say maybe part of your reporting back to us in the coming days, you could address that issue as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, before we move off this topic and get to the agenda, can I make one final comment?
Yes.
Great. After reflecting on the past weeks of protests and listening to kind of all the demonstrators out there, I just want to make sure that this council understands that it's not just protesting about police brutality, which I think, you know, we've all pledged to kind of do more around. It's really around the 400 years of inequality. And I think we, as local government leaders, have a role to do more. So, when we think about our policies, how do we dismantle that systemic racism? Everything from economic development that we've heard about, housing policy, education, how much money we put against community programs. I think those are all things that we control with our budget and with our votes. And so, I challenge us to think about that even after the protests are done.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item on the agenda? Celeste?
TO 20-06. This is a public hearing, an ordinance fixing and determining the FY 2021 and FY 2, FY 2026 capital improvements program budget, and appropriating expenditure and revenue funds for the fiscal year 2021, and reprogramming of previously appropriated funds.
Thank you very much. And who will do the presentation? Ms. Mester?
Ms. Mayor Charter, can I make a statement?
Oh, yes. And I might want to make one, too. But why don't you start?
I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of TO 20-06 and 20-16, the city's capital improvement program and an amendment to the FY 2020 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you very much. I also would like to make a statement. I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of TO 20-06 and TO 20-16, the city's capital improvement program and an amendment to the 2020 budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the city's budget. I can participate in the matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. All right. Ms. Mester, are you making this presentation?
I'd like to clarify my, Dave Snyder, just out of an abundance of caution, and the city attorney has said I do not need to make this statement, but I will anyway. My adult daughter, who is not a dependent, is in the hiring process for the Falls Church schools, and having spent a number of years with the Arlington Public Schools, and I'm just making this statement, and that I believe that I can continue to act fairly and objectively. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead on now to the presentation. Is that you, Ms. Mester?
Sure, Mayor. I'd be glad to do a highlight of the item that's before you this evening. As the agenda notes, this is for public hearing only. Council did receive a full briefing on May 26, when you conducted the first reading and scheduled the next steps for the CIP. This is the CIP for capital projects for FY 21 to 26. It is scheduled for action and adoption on June 22 at your regular business meeting following tonight's public hearing. As I noted in the briefing at first reading, this has been reviewed and adopted by the Planning Commission, and that is outlined in their motion in your staff report. The staff report before you this evening is unchanged from, content-wise, from what you saw on first reading. Just to highlight for the community, I won't go through the full presentation that we did that covered a lot of project specifics, but I did want to highlight a few of the changes and key points that are reflected in this CIP. The sidewalks and streetlight program under transportation was increased from the Planning Commission's review from $100,000 to $180,000. We also were able to maintain neighborhood traffic calming using NVTA's 30% money, even though we had thought that we would have to reduce that. But as a result of some federal pandemic relief funds, the CARES Act, we were able to, WAMADA, we were able to reduce the WAMADA local funding to allow us to keep the NTC program funded. We did reduce the facility reinvestment, PEGO cash, local cash program to $125,000 because of some of that revenue shortfall, but that funding does allow us to focus on the priority projects. We have noted that the sanitary sewer and stormwater projects in the CIP are presented to document the full need in the stormwater, as reflected by the task force recommendation. But we will need to look at a rate study and monitor the revenues to determine if the debt can be issued. And so, that is proposed for the fall 2020, as we work through the COVID pandemic economic impact results. And the only other item that I would like to highlight for council, because it ties to your next item in terms of the VDOT revenue sharing grant item, on line 175 of the staff report, which is posted to the website for the public, we've outlined the transfer of local funding between two transportation programs. This is already appropriated funds, but we do not need it for one project, and we are proposing to switch it to another. The one that does not need to be funded, that did have some grant money on it, is the South Maple roadbed reconstruction because of our recent repaving. It is not required at this time. However, the important intersection at South Maple and South Washington, which will put in a full traffic signal and improve our pedestrian access across that very busy road, is short funding for several reasons, utility conflicts, cost escalations, right-of-way acquisition. So, we're proposing to move the local share of that grant funding, which is $175,000, to the South Maple program from the roadbed reconstruction project. We will deallocate the revenue share grant but retain the local funding to support that project. It does not have a fiscal impact. As I noted, it was already appropriated. And so, with that, staff's recommendation is to receive public comments today on the CIP, and then we look forward to final review and adoption on June 22. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation and all your fine work. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to council comments? Before we do that, I'm just going to ask the city clerk, are there any comments yet received on this matter, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have a comment.
Okay. Could you read it, please?
Sure. Tim Stevens, Chair of the Energy Transition Subcommittee of the Environmental Sustainability Council, which is a city board, wrote, "To relay the subcommittee's support of the staff proposal to fund in this year's CIP the conversion of over 1,000 streetlights to LED technology, and to move ahead with the project as soon as staff has resolved open issues such as selection of lamp style and bulb brightness." He said LED streetlights will reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions by reducing the amount of electricity needed to operate them. And after approximately four years, staff estimates that savings from reduced electricity requirements from LED streetlights will save the city over $40,000 per year. He also said that the longer life and reliability of LED streetlights also mean that maintenance requirements will be reduced.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there comments from council?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Conley, please.
Mr. Stevens also suggested that there be some citizen input. Uh, Mr. Stevens also suggested that there be some citizen input into some of those selections ahead of time and that, uh, some of the concerns that have happened in other communities are when people are surprised at the brightness or at the lumens or the, the warmth of the light that's coming out of the LED light bulbs. So having community input ahead of time, I would second Mr. Stevens' thought.
Okay. I would actually like, if I could, to third, uh, Mr. Stevens' thought and ask maybe that the city manager could come back to council, uh, because it's important before we roll out, I don't know, we just hear 1,000 lights. I think LEDs have different, um, characteristics than other lights, either incandescent or sodium lights in terms of warmth, in terms of lumens, and, um, they have a very long lifespan. So if we pick them wrong, we're stuck with them for about a decade. Um, and so I would ask that, um, the city manager come back to council in some fashion before any purchases are made with some information about, um, you know, lumens and temperature. And also, for example, in Arlington, I understand that in residential neighborhoods, uh, many of the neighborhoods have, um, two settings. So in the early hours of the evening, it's one setting, but after a certain time, maybe midnight, they actually drop a little bit. And so I think we should consider, um, all the technologies before we make this purchase. And so I would just ask that the council be consulted, uh, the community as well, but just that there's input on this, uh, decision. Mr. Shields, does that sound like something we could do?
It does. I'll work through a process and get back to the city council on this. The vote to approve the CIP is not, uh, is not the decision on LEDs versus sidewalks. I know that there has been some discussion on that. Unless the council next, uh, in two weeks is ready to make that decision, um, the, uh, our intention really was to first just get the appropriation and then have a follow-up on that policy decision as to which we're going to do. Certainly if we do the LEDs, we need to get more information out to the community in terms of what it is we are, um, you know, what that will look like. And so all those points you made, uh, I'll take back to staff and we'll have a process for the council.
Great. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt, Vice Mayor Conley. Did you have some other comments? I just wanted to follow up on that.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments about the CIP?
A quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Um, Cindy, the, uh, the local funds from the South Maple project that are being moved to that South Washington Planning Opportunity area, do we know exactly what that money's going to be used for?
Uh, yes, sir. It'll be on the South Maple-South Washington intersection and that's the yellow flashing light that's down by Cavalier Trail and Aurora House Group Home. And it'll go to a full traffic signal. It'll have three phases. It'll put crosswalks and pedestrian improvements and lighting, um, as we cross over to Cavalier Trail on the county side and then, um, across South Washington, back to the city's businesses.
Okay. Any additional streetscape work as part of that?
Uh, there will be some streetscape improvements on the city side and then we'll work long-term on the county side. A lot of the utility poles are on their side, um, that are still above ground. And, um, we're working through, um, some of the costs, um, for where we can do brick sidewalks and what kind of plaza we can actually make for, uh, pedestrian refuge and bus shelters there as well.
Okay. And remind me again when that project, or when that money will be put to work when that project starts?
Uh, we are in the 95% design stage, doing final review with VDOT. Uh, this funding would be necessary in order to, um, close out our budget gap. And so we would be able to look late summer, fall to put the RFP out on the street.
Okay. Thank you.
And it will follow after South Washington, which is, uh, scheduled contract award scheduled to come to council, um, later this month. Um, and so we'll do the South Washington intermodal Hillwood stuff and then South Maple would follow behind that.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Other comments or questions?
Mayor, I have two.
All right.
Um, so on the sidewalk, um, item, Wyatt, in the FY 20 budget, I believe it's part of the spot improvements, we had identified the missing links on South Maple and then the corner kind of North Oak and Seton. Are those two projects still on deck to be done? Or if not, kind of what's, what's the plan?
So the council freed up, um, half of the, the $50,000 for the spot improvements and $50,000 for neighborhood traffic calming. And so I'm trying to assess with the, uh, DPW for the spot improvements, what's the 50,000? What can we get the most out of the 50,000 in terms of basically the two items that we discussed earlier with council? And I, and I wanted to get a response back from, uh, Mr. Bradley on that item. So let me get a note to council on what our recommendation is, uh, where to dedicate that money and, um, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Um, and then my second had to do with the few projects that we have up in front of NVTA. So I saw that NVTA released a report that summarized all the public comment and I think Small But Mighty Falls Church, I don't want to say that I saw that we were third and fourth in terms of the most number of comments out of the total list of the six-year program. Um, so I wanted to ask Wyatt and Cindy if there's anything else we need to do or if we're just waiting for NVTA to vote and see what gets funded.
I'll defer to Cindy on that, but I did want to just thank you, uh, for all the work you did on that. I know you galvanized a lot of those comments, so, uh, we know that that makes a difference. Thank you.
Indeed, it does. That's one of the fourth important criteria for selection. Uh, so we are anticipating hearing tomorrow from NVTA staff, the actual recommended projects to be awarded. Uh, that's the staff recommendation. It will then go to two NVTA committees mid-June. One is the Finance Committee on June 18th and the other is the Planning and Policy Committee on June 19th. On the Policy and Planning Committee, the PPC, Councilman Snyder formally serves on that one and regularly attends the finance. So that's when we will have a good dialogue with, uh, those two committees to hear what they will recommend to the full authority. So from a community engagement, the public comment period has been closed. Uh, certainly staff and your council liaison to NVTA and the formal member will continue to advocate on behalf of the city's two applications as they work through the allocation of the $522 million as well as any other, uh, funding that may become available if other, uh, grant of awards don't proceed. There's a couple out there that may not be able to continue to deliver and so it may free up some funding. So I think Mr. Snyder is the next one on deck to, uh, support our staff work.
And, um, Councilmember Hardy, thanks a lot for, um, helping to spearhead the, um, the, um, citizen input. You're right, we did very well on citizen input. Thank you for adding to you and all of our citizens. The initial ranking came out and both of our projects ranked reasonably high. There are a number of criteria, you know, the cost per dollar spend and congestion and, uh, the legislature over time has imposed a lot of different criteria on NVTA. The sense that I got initially at the last committee meeting was that our two projects do fall above the line for the funding that they think they're going to have. So that's good news. There was already a little bit of pressure to pick one over the other. Um, I did not, um, agree to that. I advocated both of our projects. So we'll see how this unfolds, but, uh, we've been working it hard. Thank you, um, Councilmember Hardy and all the citizens. Thank you, Cindy, for working this. So, uh, we're, we're very much engaged in the process right now, but certainly at least one, I'm pushing for both and I know Cindy is as well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Snyder, for your efforts. It's really been a team, uh, team project here, so we thank all of you, Ms. Hardy and Ms. Mester and the whole community who have advocated very strongly for Falls Church Projects. Are there any comments on this matter before I move to a motion and a vote? Any other comments? All right. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Is it just public hearing tonight?
Uh, let's take a look. Let me get my glasses here.
Yes, ma'am. Just a public hearing this evening, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So, um, we have called for public comment before Madam, uh, Madam Clerk. There is no additional public comment, is there?
There is not.
Okay. So do we have a motion regarding this item?
Uh, no motion tonight, just a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's coming back on June 22nd.
I'm sorry. Okay. Um, all right. Well, let's move on then to the next item.
Good idea. Uh, we have TR 20-26, resolution to affirm the deallocation of revenue sharing, whoops, I was reading from that, Cindy. Resolution to affirm the deallocation of revenue sharing funds from UPC 113184, South Maple Roadbed Reconstruction.
All right. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item, um, as Ms. Mester noted in the CIP discussion just a moment ago, we had sought VDOT revenue sharing, uh, program funds in the amount of 475,000 dollars to do a complete roadbed reconstruction of South Maple Avenue. Um, after getting that allocation, we did an engineering study of the road base and it was determined that the road base was sufficient. Therefore, we went ahead and repaved it last year. We do not plan to, uh, go back to do this project and so, uh, we have asked VDOT to deallocate these funds. I do just want to note that this is not really a loss of funds. These revenue sharing funds are always available to the city and we'll reapply to use them. It's always a 50-50 match and we've used these, uh, this funding source for a lot of projects in the city in the past and will continue to do so in the future.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, are there any comments or questions from council? Okay. Any, uh, public comment, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right. Uh, do we have a motion?
Oh, I move to approve TR 20-26.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lichtenhouse on the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
Yes, our next item is before you on first reading. It's TO 20-16, ordinance to amend ordinances 1995 and 1996 as previously amended by ordinances 2003, 2004, and 2005 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2020 for the general fund and the capital improvements program funds.
Mr. Shields?
So Mayor, members of council, this will be our last budget amendment for the current year's budget, FY 2020. The purpose of this budget, uh, is to appropriate some of the CARES funding and, uh, Ms. Bawa will provide the details on that. And then the other thing that it does is it cuts $200,000 from the facility's reinvestment budget. This is one area of spending where we've put a hold, an administrative hold on spending, knowing that our revenues will come in significantly lower than originally, uh, budgeted due to the COVID-19 emergency and its impact on our economy. So this is one step of just amending the budget to reflect that reduction in revenues. We have significant other areas of underspending that will also be deployed, uh, to help close that gap, but we wanted to, uh, have this formal action, uh, as, as, as part of our preparation, um, for, for that decline in revenues. I'll turn it over to Ms. Bawa for other details on this budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor Charter, members of the council. We have for you, uh, request to appropriate, um, 219,500 dollars today. Uh, we received a CARES funding grant, um, in the amount of 1.275 million and of which 75,000 was appropriated by council as part of the fiscal year 21 budget adoption, uh, at the last meeting. That leaves a balance of 1.2 million. Of that today, we are requesting 166,625 in CARES funding appropriation, uh, for various line items, and I'll just, um, quickly go over that. Uh, for emergency assistance to residents, that includes, um, rental utility, food assistance. These are amounts that we're going to need all the way through June. Some of these have been expended, but this appropriation will make all expenditures whole for the current fiscal year. Additionally, uh, we are anticipating 92,000 in, uh, technology, um, for enhancements to support telework and virtual meetings. Um, this includes a purchase of, um, 40, um, laptops for bringing 50% of workforce to, um, remote access and as well as buying more Cisco, um, licenses, um, for, um, teleworking and a little bit of overtime associated with those two items. In addition, um, CARES funding, oh, 5,000 for personnel for emergency COVID Phase One reopening as we need an official at the entrance, uh, for the Phase One starting today at the West, um, opening of the city hall. And, um, 17,625, um, for local match for the FEMA grant. FEMA grant would, um, cover expenditures related to PPE for residents, employees, um, clients that are visiting, um, city hall and, um, um, also community messaging and pub, um, public COVID-related facility signage. So signage and any messaging that's happening, those are eligible under FEMA grant. And those total 52,875 dollars for a total appropriation request today of 219,500. Um, these funds, uh, per the CARES guidelines have to be expended, any expenditures that are covered between March 1st and December 30th, as well as, um, their requirements right now dictate that invoices have to be received as well as checks have to be cut by December 30th. There is some talk about relaxing that a little bit, um, a request from jurisdictions if we could just encumber those funds. However, we do not have any update on that yet, um, no further information on that. Other than that, this appropriation request, um, um, sorry, this ordinance request, um, 200,000, um, short, um, transfer to the city facilities reinvestment. Currently, that project has 400,000 available balance. That includes 350,000 from current year appropriation and 50,000 left over from, uh, prior years. And, um, 175 to 200,000 would be, uh, is estimated amount for doing priority reinvestments for the police entry, weather canopy, the boiler vent room replacement, farmhouse HVAC and the humidity controls and the barn security systems. That would be done in roughly 200,000. And we are requesting that, um, we fund that, that pay-as-you-go account, um, by 200,000 less for this year. We do have some preliminary, uh, revenue numbers, um, for, um, as you recall, June 1st was, uh, the extension that was provided on, uh, some of the local tax categories. And, um, we have seen a mixed, um, a mixed trend so far. So just, um, on a quick look and with the preliminary results, I'll just cover it very quickly of the revenue collections for March and April. For sales tax, uh, we have done, um, from what we have, has been reported by the state, we're just about meeting our budget. Uh, we had projected a decline of, um, 25% in a moderate case and a 50% in worst case. So, um, this is due to high, obviously due to high grocery, um, sales and, um, also higher online sales, which offset a lot of the other smaller businesses that, um, offset a lot of the other smaller businesses that saw a significant decline. I would like to also remind here that pre-COVID, we were hitting double-digit increases for sales tax. So with the way the trend has been so far for March and April, we're just meeting about our budget. For meals tax, on the other hand, March is roughly 25% below budget, and April is roughly 65% below budget. And in that category, the moderate, we had, in the moderate scenario, we are projected a decline of 50% and a 75% decline in worst case. So we are somewhere between the moderate and worse in that category. And in April, 75%, 75% of the businesses paid their meals taxes, and roughly 30% of those that paid reported a $0 gross sales. So the numbers are, in April, are significantly lower than March, of course. In March, we saw the downward trend in the last two weeks. And the May collections for meals taxes are due on June 20th, so we'll know more as the next few weeks. TOT, the transient occupancy tax, the projections were 75% and 90% between the moderate and worst case. April report shows a 90% decline, so we are very much in line with the worst-case scenario. So these three categories are the main categories I wanted to cover to give a little flavor of where our local tax category revenues are heading in the two months, March and April. So we will be bringing this ordinance back to council for second hearing and adoption on June 22nd, so that this is done prior to the end of the fiscal year close. As for the CARES funding, we plan to bring a discussion to council at a work session in July, and followed by an ordinance for request to appropriate additional funding from CARES grants in late July or early August, so that the funds can be expended in a timely manner. And I will conclude my report here and see if there are any questions.
All right, thank you very much for that thorough update. Are there questions or comments from Ms. Bow?
I do.
Please.
Ms. Bow, thank you for the update on our revenue picture. To make sure I heard it all, because there was a lot of information thrown out there. So what I heard is that for March and April, our sales taxes actually met budget. Did that meet kind of what we were projecting FY 20 would be? Or did you meet the projections that you thought based on the decrease?
It meets the 20 budget, but in 20, we were doing, up until second quarter, we were doing good 10% to 11% over year-over-year increase, which is what we're not seeing now.
Okay. And we think that's mainly because online and grocery compensated for all the other categories?
That's correct.
Okay, and then meals, you said that what we're seeing is kind of between the moderate and worst scenario. And then for TOT, really hotel, we are seeing kind of the worst case, the 90% decrease?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So kind of a mixed bag there. On the remaining kind of 1 million, I guess that's what the plan for the July discussion will be for CARES money, some thoughts based on the EDA discussion. So the EDA has issued their second round of grant funding using kind of the 250,000 of land banking money. I think they also are appropriating 100,000 or up to 100,000 to help small businesses reopen, to make sure that people are reopening safely. One of the questions that came out of that discussion is that because CARES money is so restrictive in that it has to be kind of unappropriated, kind of new expenses we have related to the pandemic versus EDA money is obviously much more flexible, whether they can get reimbursed for both the business grants they're doing as well as this new reopening program that they're starting up. Is that something that they've discussed with finance as well?
Yes, we are in discussion about that, and that will come as part of the future budget amendments, depending on what the guidelines dictate.
Okay. That just seemed to make sense to me, given that it sounded like CARES money was pretty restrictive versus EDA money could be used for other things, not knowing how bad the pandemic could get. We might have other needs that the EDA could help with. My second question is around the money we put aside for emergency assistance. So a question going back to Wyatt, are we meeting the demand out there for both housing and food assistance, or do we think we need more? So with this 50,000 in addition to what we've done before, again, what I've reiterated is I want to make sure we are not turning anyone away.
So the, we believe that in July, when we come back to you with a allocation for the full CARES money, there will be, one of the policy options for the council will be to increase the amount in money for emergency rental assistance as well as emergency food assistance. So to answer your question directly, the money that's appropriated to date, including the CDBG grant, is not enough to meet the demand. What has been appropriated to date is enough to get us through this fiscal year, and so to meet the demand past the end of this fiscal year would be the budget discussion that we would have in July.
Okay, so between now and July, what we've appropriated means we're not turning anyone away until we have the next budget amendment discussion?
So I've asked the question, will the money appropriated get us through until the next time we address this? And the answer back to me was yes. But let me get a bit more information on that so we can make sure that I'm getting you the accurate information.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, I'd be comfortable increasing that amount, because I think the concern I've heard is that while landlords are certainly being willing to work with tenants, and I think I just saw that Virginia is also extending their eviction kind of moratorium, I want to make sure that even though there's payment programs that exist, rent isn't canceled, right? So all it does is just push out rent. And so while tenants can pay rent another month or two later, it's still going to be there, and they're still going to owe it. And if their jobs haven't resumed, they're going to be unable to pay. So I just want to make sure we're doing enough in those areas.
Understood.
And then my last question is around, as we think about what we need to prepare for, I know that at least there's a lot of thinking that there might be a second wave of COVID, kind of late summer, early fall, probably just when we need everyone to go back to work and school. As we think about what we might need in the $1 million remaining of the CARES money, do we think we have enough supplies of, you know, whether it's PPE, testing, how can we kind of make sure that we are well buttressed against kind of potential second wave?
That's exactly what we're trying to plan for, and it's a hard thing to plan for because we don't know. So we're asking all of, you know, our health department experts. We ask the question on our regional calls to try to get insights on things we need to be thinking about for the allocation of the remainder of the funds. The, you know, one thing that we're also trying to work through is it seems logical that the schools are going to have significant unplanned expenditures to help them reopen next fall. We don't know exactly what those expenditures might be, but we are engaged in that planning exercise, and also trying to understand what other funds are available to the schools. Because when you ask regionally, it seems that most of the other jurisdictions are not planning to use their CARES money to help their school divisions. And so our school system so far has received a grand total of $38,000 of CARES money because of the allocation models that the State Department of Education used to distribute money statewide for education purposes. And so obviously, that's not enough. So those are the things that, the reason we're not giving you a full budget tonight, which ideally we would be doing, we need more time, frankly, and that's why we're asking for July timeframe to give you a fuller plan and strategy for the allocation of the remainder.
Great, thank you. And I lied, I actually had one more question. The idea of free masks, so I got the good news from Joe Carter earlier today, that sounds like we have about 1,000 free masks now on hand that we can be able to offer to the vulnerable and people who may not have it. Is that something that we do more of, especially as we look at Phase 2 potentially being around the corner for Northern Virginia?
That is correct. And so we have a small stockpile of masks, and what Joe Carter was actually referring to is a large order that is going to be coming in soon. We don't have it yet, but we will have it soon. So knowing that that's coming, we can now release our smaller stockpile to vulnerable populations, and so we're doing that immediately for Winter Hill and other areas that have put out a call where they need masks. So that's something we can now do immediately.
Terrific. Yeah, again, I'd love to be in a place where if we have police officers patrolling the street, and we see people unmasked inside restaurants or grocery stores, that we can hand them to people and kind of encourage mask adherence.
That's right. Thank you.
All right, other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, I want to focus on testing for a minute because we're constantly being reminded by the public health people that testing is fundamental to moving forward, and yet it seems to be impossible to get a test within the city of Falls Church. So, and I know several of us reached out to CVS that has various stores that will be starting testing. They declined our request for testing in our two CVSs here. So my question is, if you want to help businesses get back to business so that they can bring people back so we don't need to provide emergency rental assistance because people have their jobs back, and if it's so fundamental to the schools, what's the story with testing? And what do we have to do to meet that need? And will that be part of your consideration? And furthermore, what additional monies or programs are out there? I mean, you know, the public health people keep saying testing, 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 but I don't see the tests and the testing apparatus. So can you help a little bit with that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and I will just state that, you know, we're pressing this in all of our regional calls as well, and we're not the only ones that are struggling with this issue. Probably the vast geographical area, Fairfax County, Arlington, and all of Northern Virginia, the testing locations are few and far between. So for anyone in Falls Church, the way to get a test would be to go through your doctor, and you can get a test that way. For a walk-in test, that's the issue. Those are the ones that are few and far between. And across Northern Virginia, where they are standing up, walk-in testing, they're doing that as part of a strategy to target areas where they have higher caseloads, where they're having outbreaks. And that testing facility is accompanied with contact tracing and quarantining, where they separate families and hotel them if they have a housing, you know, very crowded or dense housing situation. That's the status quo, and CVS is rolling out testing across the Commonwealth. We pushed hard to get a CVS testing here in Falls Church, and we think that that will happen in the second round, but it did not happen in the first round. And again, I think CVS was also taking direction from the Department of Health about the areas where there are higher proportions of cases, and that's why they targeted their CVSs as they did. So that's the information that I have right now. We're continuing to press on this issue.
So let me follow up, if I might, Mr. Mayor. Two quick questions. Number one, where do we go from here in terms of advocating an effective testing regime all across the area? I think it's great that we're focused on vulnerable areas. I wish we had done that earlier, but the fact of the matter is, for businesses to restart, for people to feel comfortable, we're going to have to be able to test people pretty much on a daily basis. And I think the schools may come forward with a similar question or problem. So where do we put the pressure points here? Whether it's at the federal level, we approach our members of Congress, our senators, whether it's at the state level, and by the way, I think the amount authorized for our schools is absurdly ridiculous, and I would hope that we would correspond with our state representative and senator to take that case to the State Board of Education. But let's again focus on testing. I mean, everything we've been told is businesses are not going to be back to normal until this testing regime is established and we have an adequate infrastructure, and it's not happening, which means people are going to be out of work, we're going to need more emergency assistance, and I'd rather get to the root of the problem, which is get stores and other businesses operating and customers in there. So I'm just, Mr. City Manager, how else can we on the council, provided we want to, make this case more formally, more forcefully into home?
Well, I think there's two audiences. One would be our own Fairfax County Health District, and we can formalize that communication. That communication's been happening in our weekly meetings. So that's one audience. And then the other is, I think, you know, directly to the governor. And, you know, the governor's target was to get 10,000 tests per day. They've hit that number. You know, generally, you know, some days it's above 10,000, but you've always been about that. But even having, and they've been at that number now for two weeks or more, but we're not seeing that testing capacity here. And so I'll just note one other thing. You mentioned education, and the dialogue we're having with our schools is, can we use some of these CARES, would it change your planning if we had a very robust testing program for students and teachers? Would that change how you go about your opening strategies? And so we're still working through that dialogue with our school administration. It does seem that we could be a standout school district in terms of our level of classroom activity that we can have because we put money to that purpose. That seems, that's putting that money to really good use. Because one other aspect of the economy is, that's holding it back, is parents having kids at home. But bottom line is, getting our schools reopened and functioning properly next fall is just a huge priority, and we are trying to use what limited CARES money we have so far, and hopefully there'll be more coming on that big strategic objective.
Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions from council? Madam Clerk, has anyone made any comments from the public?
No, sir.
Could you read the email address once more in case anyone does want to comment on these items?
Sure. It is cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov.
Thank you. Unless there's any other comments, does anyone have a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading to TO 20-16. Schedule a second reading and public hearing for June 22, 2020, and advertise the same according to law.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Will you call the next item?
Yes, we have TR 20-24, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the FY 2020 Capital Funding Agreement, CFA First Amendment Among Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority, WAMADA, and the contributing jurisdictions.
All right, thank you. And I tell you, Mr. Shields, I don't know who's doing this report, but before we get too deep into it, I'd love to hear Mr. Snyder's comments on this. So either before or after, your thoughts, Mr. Shields.
And I'd like to defer to Ms. Mester on this report. So maybe if we hear from Mr. Snyder first, and then Ms. Mester?
Yeah, I'll defer to Ms. Mester first, and I'll make some comments. I do have a couple, but I want to give her a chance to present the issues, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Snyder, Mr. Shields, council. This is an update on the capital funding agreement last fall under Resolution 201932. Council approved the FY 20 Council approved the FY 20 CFA, which was a one-year CFA because we were working to do a long-term, six-year capital funding agreement so that it's more stable. Due to COVID, both WAMADA and locality staff were unable to complete the negotiations on a long-term, six-year CFA. So what's before you this evening is a one-year or one, the First Amendment of the FY 20 CFA. There are no content term changes to the CFA that council saw last year, with the exception of adding Loudoun County is a contributing party and member to this agreement due to the silver-lined planned extension. The overall WAMADA adopted budget for FY 21 is $1.9 billion, and we're at $750,000 as the cities share. This has been, the dollar amount has been appropriated within your adopted FY 21 budget that was adopted on May 26. And the capital component expenditure is reflected in the CIP that you held a public hearing on this evening. Staff will continue to work with WAMADA to negotiate out the six-year agreement. Part of that is to set some real clear expectations on what growth in budgeting and timing and reporting is. So there's more stability and reasonable growth that localities can plan for, project, and budget for. And so while state code has a 3% operating cap on WAMADA's operating side of budget, that doesn't exist on the capital side. So we're really trying to structure in this agreement so there's better predictability for local governments budgeting as they go through the capital as well as the operating. So that is the synopsis of where we are. Staff recommendation is to approve this resolution for the one-year amendment or extension as we work through the long-year capital financing. And I will note that the WAMADA board has approved the CFA. And all localities will have done likewise by the end of June. DC is the only one that, just from scheduling of their emergency meetings, it may not be until July. So with that, I'm glad to hear Mr. Snyder's comments and welcome to answer any questions.
Sure. Thanks a lot, Ms. Mester. This is, I guess this is sort of a technical thing to maintain kind of where we are to give, as Ms. Mester said, more stability in the capital side. On the operating side, there is a 3% cap that the legislature required with our full support as a precondition to some of the metro operating funding. However, the most recent legislative session allowed there to be exceptions to that. So we're engaged now, although the operational funding is not the issue with this particular item. I want folks to know that we've made it very clear that that 3% cap on operations is very important for us and that we continue to support it. So that's all that I really wanted to add. And Ms. Mester, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Based on your comment, the only thing I would add is on the operating side, we do have this 3% cap, as you noted, but those added legislative exclusions do result in some potential increases in half. And so we are working on the Virginia side as a result of General Assembly assigning, mandating NVTC to conduct a study on that point and report back to the General Assembly in November. I've been asked to serve on that working group with NVTC, other legislators, localities, and DRPT. So I will be continuing on that front to try to control the growth on the operating budget so it does indeed stay at the 3% or much closer.
Right. Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you both for all the fine work you've done on this issue. Do others have comments or questions? Any public comment on this, Ms. Heath?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of this is TR 20-24.
Uh huh.
That's the right number?
Yes.
Second.
All right, Mr. Littenhouse on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
I will. We have TR 20-23, Resolution to approve the city's participation in the Virginia Risk Sharing Association for fiscal year 2021 and to authorize the risk manager to sign the updated master agreement and fiscal year 2021 renewal with an annual premium cost not to exceed $420,000.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shields?
And this is for Ms. Mester as well. She is our risk manager.
Thank you, Council. This does seem to be tonight. A lot of my annual items came up on your agenda. This is something that council sees annually so that we can continue to have full insurance coverage for the city. We are in the pooled insurance formerly known as Virginia Municipal League. They rebranded themselves as the Virginia Risk Sharing Association, or VERSA, a year ago. There's 500 participating political subdivisions in this system. It does provide us a comprehensive and cost-benefit approach to the city's insurance coverage. There are, although the agreement is being updated, there's no term changes other than the dates are being updated for the next fiscal year and the premium amount is adjusted. I'm not recommending any coverage changes. We do have a good, robust cybersecurity component, which we initiated a year, two years ago now, and very pleased that we have that, given the risk of cybersecurity these days. The recommendation is to allow up to $420,000, although the current premium estimate is just under $415,000. Thus, allow for a modest contingency for any coverage modifications that need to be done during the course of the year. I am anticipating a credit to the FY 20 premiums as a result of COVID. They did an analysis with less vehicle use and less community programming events impacting our property and staff liability coverage. So we will have a credit of $8,300. I have that as a tentative appropriation or credit to the city, but it hasn't been assigned to the premium yet. So I have not deducted the request before you in case that premium amount changes or is modified before we receive the final coverage documents for FY 21. So without the credit, we're seeing a 3% insurance increase, and that is related to some payroll coverage increases due to additional police or type of work we're doing in the field for public works. And most of the other is just for, we've added newer vehicles or modified different things that we're insuring. So a nominal increase of 3%. With the credit, it is anticipated that that increase will be at 1.5%. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. And the staff recommendation is to approve the resolution.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
I had one.
All right.
Cindy, so I think this reminded me of a conversation we had last year about the city's policy, whether it covers landlord liability if they were willing to do shared parking, whether it's for public parking or sharing with other property owners downtown?
Yes, if we have a formal agreement for shared parking, then we can do a certificate insurance and add them on as an additional sure. We just, we need to work out the details for maintenance and what does that shared agreement look like?
So this policy would allow for that, but we would need some sort of written agreement to do so?
Yes, so it would be case by case, working out the details, but it would be a permitted additional sure.
Good news, because I think, you know, hopefully, when the economy bounces back, we'll be thinking about shared parking needs again.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, this seems to be a relatively uncontroversial resolution. And so therefore, I move to adopt TR 20-24.
All right, thank you, Mr. Z. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Hardy on the second. Before we move to a vote, Madam Clerk, are there any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead and call the vote then.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you. So let's move on to business not on the agenda. Is there any business not on the agenda? Any standing Regional Committee or Council Liaison reports?
I had a request for an update, whether it's this meeting or the next one. Why, we had previously talked about the laws that go into effect July 1st. And I know there are a lot of changes this time around. And I think the one that was at least a personal concern to me is kind of the ability to regulate firearms in the city. Is this something we can get an update on, on what the staff recommendation might look like in regional discussions?
Yes, we need to get an update to council and engage the council in this discussion. I did ask Chief Gavin to put together a working team to present some recommendations on how to, one, on model ordinances, and then, two, how we would operationalize those. And so I will follow up with her on that update and bring that to schedule, and schedule that with the city council. Carol McCosker is also a key person in this discussion. And one other point, and it's been made by the council earlier, is trying to have some uniformity across the region on these ordinances so that the public's not confused by what the rules are and the administration of them is fairly consistent. And so that also will be a goal. And to date, in my asking of my colleagues, I think they're doing a similar thing as we are, as we're studying the issues. Probably Alexandria is going to be the, possibly the most forward-leaning on these. And so we're asking for their work. They had passed an ordinance that basically stated that should the General Assembly allow the regulation of weapons in their facilities, that there was an automatic ordinance that would go into effect once the authority existed. So we're looking at that and working with our colleagues across the region. So let me schedule that with the council. As soon as we have something substantive, we can report. And we understand that this is a priority for the council.
Thank you.
All right, any other liaison reports, committee reports, et cetera? Any council? Yes, Vice Mayor Conley.
I just have one comment. This is Ms. Conley. I just want to remind people that the Georgetown Mason High School graduation is this week. And a community member, Molly Herman, has put together a movie of all of the graduates. It's going to air at 7:00 PM on FCC TV and also on the Falls Church YouTube channel. And prior to that, the PTSA is putting together a car parade of seniors. And the Falls Church Police will be helping with that. They're going to come down Park, start at St. James, come down Park Avenue, loop around past City Hall. And I know Mr. Shields and others at City Hall have worked on making it exciting at City Hall for the students as they come through. So it's a big deal for us seniors. They've had a tough senior year, and we're really proud of them for graduating.
So Vice Mayor Conley, if I could, what time would that be on Friday for us? If we wanted to join the parade?
It's Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, what time?
The parade is Wednesday. It's, I think it starts at 5:00. I can provide details if you want. They're sort of out there from the PTSA. All the kids and parents will be in cars, and there will be some people at City Hall appropriately spaced waving to them. So yes.
It'd be great if we could do the same, if we could join in the waving and the like. But if you have that information, it'd be great if you could share it. I sort of get blitzed here and there.
As we're going through the next part of the meeting, I'll look it up so that I can say it aloud during this meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Conley? Be quick, yes, Mr. Duncan.
I was referencing this earlier, but I think this is our first formal meeting since the passing of Barb Cram. I just wanted the record to officially show that, expressing our condolences and our contribution to all her contributions to the community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Thank you. And I'll tell you, I would also like to thank Ms. Conley, who took the lead on the Barb Cram proclamation and the like. And so we greatly appreciate that. And many of you were out in front of Falls Church Arts as well. I guess it was maybe Wednesday this week or last week.
It was Friday.
Oh, Friday, okay. Yeah, the days are blending together. But it was a very nice crowd. It was very moving, actually, when her retinue went by. So anyway. Any other comments before we adjourn? I know Mr. Z is anxious to adjourn us. So Ms. Conley, do you have that info yet, or do you want to just put it in an email?
Hold on. It is. It's June 10th. It starts at 5:00 at St. James. So you should be at City Hall at 5:00.
All right, that sounds great. Hopefully, we'll have a big crowd.
Oh, and the other part was they're recommending that people do the car parade, then buy some dinner from a local restaurant, and then go home and watch graduation at 7:00.
That sounds like a great idea. Thank you. Are there any other final words before we adjourn?
Mayor, I reiterate my request to adjourn, and you all practice social distancing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Z. I think it's a great plan. All right, everybody stay safe. We'll see each other next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.